But what they'll say. Okay, the taxes. It's one point eight percent inflation. I'm just hearing it from my experience. So we totally tied to inflation because you can't wait for your season to end. I just don't see that if it's residents, you don't see it. Doug's better than you, they lose it. So. Because I'm pushing to. It's a point four percent or seven percent. So it's just interesting when you start getting the numbers of it. I think you're.
There is. That's true. You're right. I'm not. I'm actually going on back there with someone. It's our election. I would. 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 Yeah. But they were all. Yeah. But they were all. Right? Yeah. Yeah, exactly. But it's just interesting because it gives inflation more of a fight than it really is. It's just interesting when you start to ask. I don't know. It was usually that question. So here's the story. It's just. Because once you retire, your pension or whatever you got, you're basically just a cost. You're just a little lesser. So, but like you said, I love the inflation discussion. I love it. You know, we elected a campaign.
Really?
I get paid to do it now. They always say find what you love and do it for a living. I did.
SP four and fourteen. I was there. I was with you. Yep. I was up there with you. Yeah. It was all us. So there was a couple hundred of us. So no one found us. Okay. They got together. Yeah. Yeah. We still have rally time. We did our thing. We made sure that we don't melt. And it was Ag Day. Of all days we could have done, it was Ag Day. Like, we get the true Ag experience, that rain or shine, you gotta go. Yeah. Yeah. Go, go. Thank you.
All right. Well. We're not spreading out. Picture.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the San Marcos City Council meeting to order for April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Councilmember Sinella, could you please lead us this evening?
Ready? Again. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, I will be giving the invocation this evening. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us a spirit of unity. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. And help us carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us work as a whole. May we always have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission serving the citizens of San Marcos. Amen. Okay, Mr. Scarlett, could we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Here.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, moving on to our first order of business, which is our consent calendar. Do we have any items that any council members wish to poll? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, moving on to oral communications, we have several speakers. One, the first one is Sylvia Williams, which she actually gave us her public comments in written form, so you should all have it at your, at your location, correct? Okay, just making sure everyone has that? Yep. Okay, and then moving on to Sylvia Williams, followed by Christopher, I think it's Allen, followed by George Veramontes, will be in that order. So Sylvia, if you could come up, please. I'm sorry?
I said, that's me.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Sylvia, come on, come on up and speak, if you don't mind. Sorry. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You're right. We have yours in, in writing. My apologies. If you don't, if you don't want to come up and read them, that's fine.
No problem. No problem. I'm just learning.
No worries. Okay, well, we have them in writing, so sorry to put you on the spot like that. I wasn't paying attention. Sorry. Okay, Christopher Allen will be our first speaker, followed by George Veramontes, followed by Doug Hicks, and then we have several speakers after that. Welcome.
Good evening, Board. My name is Christopher Allen. I'm with the Southwest Mountain State Regional Council of Carpenters. The reason why we're here today is because of tax fraud in our communities. What is tax fraud? Tax fraud in the construction industry happens when you got a developer, a general contractor, or a super, or a subcontractor that pays cash under the table, cheats the cities out of taxes that should be going to public works projects, fire departments, police departments, everybody that's in this building, helping to build San Marcos up to be a better San Marcos. The reason why we're bringing this up, and personally for me, I'm a career-heavy highway infrastructure carpenter. I built bridges all around this area, from Nordal Replacement to Borden Road Overcrossing to Mission Avenue, along with many road replacements and upgrades along the seventy-eight. These are all funded by tax dollars that we all pay. However, you look right across the street, there's a developer by the name of Lennar Homes, and they're known to use cheating criminal contractors. Criminal contractors that don't pay their taxes, that cheat the workers, that cheat the city of San Marcos. I was on one of their jobs, and they actually trafficked children up from Mexico. They put them up in an apartment, they paid them fifty dollars a day. If that's not criminal, I don't know what is. I'll close with this. Will you make a commitment and be on the right side of history and help stop these criminal contractors, protect the working class, and our community? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be, oops, I'm gonna make sure I've got it, George Veramontes. Followed by Doug Hicks, and then Marlene Walters.
Oye, Consilio, buenas tardes. Alcaldy, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jorge Veramontes. Yo estoy aquí para hablar de, ya escucharon a Chris, de hablar de tax fraud, de los impuestos. Es algo poquito más grave que no nomás pagar tus impuestos. And I'll translate, having no time, I'll translate for you guys in English, too. It's, es, lo que no saben es mucho de los contratistas que vienen aquí, a la comunidad de nosotros, aquí, a la ciudad de San Marcos, pagan en efectivo. Que es lo que es cuando pagan en efectivo? La ciudad no agarra los taxes, como ya escucharon de mi compañera, Chris. Pero la cosa más importante es que trafican a la gente aquí. Gente de otros países que vienen aquí a los Estados Unidos a hacer algo mejor para sus vidas. Y estos contratistas que no pagan lo que deben de pagar y están ganando el sueldo bueno y no están pagando los taxes, es lastima esta gente. Yo tengo la oportunidad, Consilio, de ir a las casas y hablar con los trabajadores y sus familias que están pasando esto. No me da más tristeza que ver un hombre viviendo en un garage con su esposa y un niño durmiendo en el piso. Por qué? Los traen para construir los proyectos que tenemos nosotros para vivir y todo, y no les pagan lo que tienen que pagar. Y sabe, la única cosa que sí le voy a decir es, tenía chance de hablar con la esposa. La esposa llorando me dijo, le doy gracias a Dios todos los días que mi niño nació aquí en el mejor país del mundo. Porque va a tener la oportunidad, si lo hacemos bien, que tenga algo. So les quiero decir, Consilio de San Marcos, qué van a hacer para que no pase estos contratistas aquí en nuestra ciudad, que hagan todo bien, que paguen los impuestos, que hagan todo como se debe de hacer. And councilmembers, I'll leave you guys with this. If you're thinking, if you're pro-labor or against labor, union or non-union, it's not about that. It's just about being human, treating people like human beings, especially that workforce that doesn't hear their voice. We're here on their part so they can hear, their voices being heard. So thank you very much. Would you like me to translate it, or my coworker behind me will clean it up, guys? Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Doug Hicks, followed by Marlene Walters, and then LeAnn Portman.
Tax fraud. It sounds like a white-collar crime. It starts with a lot of human trafficking. Those that are building our residences here in San Marcos, a lot of them are victims of human trafficking. They risk everything, their family's safety, their own lives, they take on a debt from the cartel, all for the opportunity to live the American dream, only to find out when they show up, they don't get that dream. They have a labor broker that's family with the coyote, and they tell them one thing. It's simple. The American dream is not for you. Know your place. There is nothing more American than to deny somebody the American dream. We talk to the workers, we speak to them, they live in garages, four to six families to a garage with sheets hanging between them. And they're building homes for multimillionaire developers, and I begrudge no one profit. Developers don't make money, we don't work. But they should not lower the cost of their projects and raise their profit margins off the back of exploitation. Tax fraud is very simple. They pay their workers in cash, and everybody says, hey, Uncle Sam takes a big bite out of me. It goes beyond that. What pays for our first responders? What pays for our education? What pays for our infrastructure? It's simple, tax dollars. Developers will come to San Marcos and say, I'm gonna profit from your community, but I assure as hell I'm not gonna reinvest back and give you your fair share of tax dollars. But they send another message to the workers. You're not gonna be living here. You cannot afford a home. They pay the workers in cash, and it's simple. It keeps them under financial servitude. What do you need to rent an apartment? Proof of income. What do you need to buy a car? Proof of income. Where do companies get this much money to pay their workforce in cash? There is no legitimate business that has access to that level of cash. It's all part of a criminal enterprise. Tax fraud goes beyond a financial crime. It destroys families' lives. What my partner said is, we spoke to a family in a garage, and the mom was crying because her son was a citizen, and she knew she was never gonna have the dream, but maybe her kids could, and they were willing to risk their family's safety for that shot. But we're writing off an entire generation of workers. We talked about an epic housing shortage in the state of California, and those that are actually building the few homes that we have are experiencing tax fraud every day. They're finding out what financial servitude looks like. They're finding out what it looks like to have a cartel hold a debt over their head. And that's who's building our homes today. We're here today to ask San Marcos to step up and start leading in a direction. Right now, this is known as the playground, where you can come, and you can use illicit business practices, and there will be zero repercussions. None. There are other cities that have taken steps to move forward with transparency ordinances, and they say something that's very simple. Before a subcontractor starts working, you have to disclose that your license, that you have valid workman's comp that covers every worker on that job, so the public safety net doesn't absorb the cost if a worker gets injured. And you have to disclose if you have any wage and hour violations. If you do, it doesn't prevent you from getting the job, but if you lie about it, it holds your permit above that developer's head. And now, all of a sudden, the developers are starting to pay attention. Because the one thing they care about, heads on beds. Everything up to that point for them doesn't make profit. San Marcos should be leading the way. This is a community that people want to live in. This is a place developers want to build, and you're one of the few cities that have available land stock. The land rush is coming for housing. The question is, how is it going to be built? And what are the impacts to the community gonna be? Are you going to be the city that's a law and order city? Are you going to be the city that says, not here, and not now, and not ever? People come here to pursue their American dream. I want to make sure that in all cities, that every worker that works in those cities doesn't have to deal with an American nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Marlene Walters, followed by LeAnn Portman, and then John Mosher will be next.
Thank you very much. It's Walder, D-E-R. Today, I'm talking about a few things, and I agree with them, because I have a feeling the flippers who are flipping our mobile homes are using inexpensive labor. I don't think they're legal, all of them. And that's just one example. But they're flipping homes in our park, and originally, when I moved in, which is back in the early eighties, you could not keep a mobile home that was over nineteen seventy on the property. When it got sold, it was to be removed. They are flipping them. If they're flipping them correctly or not, I don't know, because if they're not putting in new wiring, we've had two fires recently, if they're not putting in new plumbing, removing the asbestos, all they do is they pull it out themselves, the workers, and they put it in a big truck that they take to the dump. So the asbestos is not even being mitigated, I think is the word, at all. Okay, that's on the mobile home. As far as the, you have pictures, that's the work that has been done, and that's what the roads look like now. The first picture is of a street that is what I live on, and there is one of the cement area that they didn't even bother to do. It's no worse than it was, but I think that's pretty bad when you have to walk over it. I talked to you about the new developments causing more runoff water to our property. It's coming in on the property and leaching up and out into our roads and under our houses. My house has never had water under the house. This is the first year that my house is damp underneath the house. I don't see where the water's coming from, so it must be coming from underneath the ground itself. And we have a lot of houses with sump pumps, the last few years even, that didn't have sump pumps. We originally only had six pumping out from under homes, and now I think we have maybe fifteen. The slurry seal, I don't know how thick suri seal is to be, but if you could see how thin that is, it's like nothing. But this was over an area that they did, and then they suri sealed it, and these pieces are just coming off on the land that they supposedly resurfaced and redid, and there's pot marks and holes. I talked to you on the sound barrier windows or glass that was installed five years ago, and I said the rubber stripping is coming out. I talked to you about it two years ago, but when COVID ended, they were supposed to replace the window that was broken. Plus, they were to fix all the windows, and one of them is the window at my place where you see it foggy. That's because they did not bother to remove the plastic sheeting, and so I have a real bad window as well. But everything they said they were going to do after COVID, when it was over, did not get done. And they're gonna tell you, we spent a lot of money on the roads. Well, what good is spending a lot of money when they do inferior work? I know the city's having this similar problem with the potholes over on Barham, but that's because we have heavier-duty trucks, heavier-duty moving vans, heavier-duty everything that comes through the roads, and we're not making the roads cement, and we're putting the blacktop on without great filling, because if you don't... I lived in Oregon for a number of years, where the weather changed, and they had a machine that would eat up the blacktop, and it would be in the machine, and it would grind it up, melt it, and they would add new blacktop or something with it, tire treads or, I don't know what. And they would come, and it would relay the roads right then and there. We didn't have the problems with streets, even though they wanted to do it every single year, they would come down my neighborhood and do it. But the roads seemed to stay better.
Thank you, Marlene. One thing I would suggest, though, is on the sand wall, that I believe that we actually are supposed to maintain that, being that it was part of our capital improvement project when we widened the road on Barham. So if I could get you to, please, leave your information with our city clerk, and we'll have city staff reach out to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Thank you. Next speaker is LeAnn Portman, followed by John Mosher, and then our final speaker will be Florence Bollinger.
Honorable Mayor Rebecca Jones in City Council. I'm LeAnn Portman, and you're gonna see me a lot, because I am fighting for rent control in our parks. We have found out that Haven Management and Millennium did not do their diligence of the ninety days to submit to you that they were gonna do this new increase of thirty-five dollars. When I was buying my home and coming from Oceanside, which I was the first president for rent control, it was only one to two percent. They are now charging us eight percent, which is highway robbery. It only should be one to two percent. That's four to six dollars a year, not thirty-five. And we just got our, our first rent increase of thirty-five dollars. I'm also asking you to please go back to last year. Let's find out if they did not do the rent increase and give it to you ninety days before, because I'm pretty sure they didn't. So if they didn't, I want my money back, and so does the other three hundred and seventy-two owners in our park. I really, really think that we have to be diligent, you, the city council, to make sure that our parks are doing what they're supposed to do. And like the last lady that said about the flippers, yeah, there's lots of them coming into my park, too, and they're making lots of money. And what I bought eight years ago for seventy-eight thousand dollars is now going for over three hundred thousand. It's not really affordable living anymore, but I want to keep it that way. Jack Griffin, you were saying, council, before last, when I attended, that you had grant money. We need a pickleball court here in San Marcos, and we have that wonderful park down the road, and I think we have some land. So maybe we can get somebody to step up, and let's propose that, and have a pickleball court there. I don't want it in my park. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, LeAnn. Next speaker will be John Mosher, followed by Florence Bollinger.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Mr. Griffin, Ms. Park, Phil. I've been coming here for about five years now. I live in the San Marcos Mobile Estates. Last year, we actually went to a rent review hearing. Four of you came out and actually did a walk through the park with us, spent an hour or more looking at, at the situations we face. We're back at the same point. Reminds me of something from the hearing. One of the last things the mayor said was, we'll see you next year, in talking to the other attorney. You asked the owners to communicate with the residents. The exact opposite happened. Communication didn't even happen until January of this year. Our HOA president at that time, Flip, our next speaker, but she's asked not to speak. She was gonna read Sylvia's message, but you've been giving that in writing. But Flip, back here, sent multiple requests to start the process and continue working to fix the little problems and other problems in the park. No response. Mike Gallo, our next president, when he was brought in in October, went above that. Several of you have gotten communications from him, so you know he's reaching out for us, just like I've done. He didn't get responses. It didn't happen until we got to the beginning of the year, and the rent increase notice had to go out to fit that ninety-day schedule. Last year, a big thing seemed to be the streets, because they initially said that they would take them out and replace them, take it down to the base and replace them. Councilwoman Walton felt that that would, would solve the problem, and it would take care of a problem for us. We tried to show them otherwise from a history, but it didn't work out, and he had made a comment several times that if they took care of that, then we wouldn't be coming back every two weeks to talk about it. So I took that to heart. I stayed back, took care of our place, watched what was going on in the park. It's, it's unfortunate, but our streets, unless you knew exact sections that they put in, you'd have a hard time telling this year from last year. We actually have water coming up through the alligatoring that they didn't replace. They would patch up to an area and leave a section. I walked around, knowing construction, going, okay, that's an automatic, that's, that's future work. They left it to fall apart, and it already has because of all the rain we got. So we're back at the same point, except, you know, we've got the same thing going on now, is try and settle before they would have to turn their numbers in. We're gonna have a special board meeting tomorrow night to discuss it. My push is to get them to turn their numbers in, so you can actually see an actual compared to what they presented to us last year, as to what they were gonna spend and do in the park. So we're taking our pictures, getting it ready, so no matter what happens. My guess is, two weeks from now, I'll come in here and, and also invite you all to come through the park. I know you have to do it separately, and what I intend to do this time, in case you can't make it, I know Maria, your schedule was busy last year, is Flip and I were going around today, checking out the driveways and other stuff specifically, so we could mark them for you and actually bring maps, give them to you, so if you couldn't take the time to go with us, and felt more comfortable doing it alone, then you would actually be able to drive around the park or get out and take a look at some of these areas. The couple areas where we had retaining walls, behind Susan Thompson's place, we showed you, and Aaron's, the hillside has failed, they've stacked some brick, they put a couple two-by-twelves, now they've got a bunch of sandbags. That hillside has failed three times behind her house this year. So we're, we're back at square one again. The hope is to try and get something accomplished. I had mentioned to, to Mr. Griffin a while back, that I was trying to work on a proposal of a flat two percent increase. It's something that's been brought up before. They had it in, in their last proposal, that, that that was the floor they wanted to keep. And I know, talking to the, the two principals that, that owned the park, their concern was, year over year, that they could budget for the next year, which makes sense. So I'm pushing to get that out there, and as I reach out to all these other parks in the city, I'm, I'm finding out they have the same difficulties we do. The level of income those parks are creating now, make it so they, they do make a reasonable... I gotta think of the exact word, but they make, they make money off the parks now. So there's no reason to keep taking more from the people and not taking care of the parks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. Next speaker is Florence Bollinger, followed by Judith Dean.
I no longer see... She was, she was gonna read Sylvia, so that's why she had her name down.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Florence. Next is Judith Dean, and Judith, we actually have already voted on this item, but you can go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you. My comments don't have to do with the pro or con of what you voted on, but I noticed that there was a notice of looking for volunteers on committees, and I, for a couple of years, my neighborhood has been looking for relief from problems with student housing and frat houses. And I know that you have a Student and Neighborhood Relations Commission, and I wanted to go to the meetings and ask them to address the issues that we've been having with serious, serious problems. I noticed that the members haven't been having any meetings. They haven't had any meetings in three years that are not online. There's no meeting minutes since two thousand eighteen. And if you're looking to replace people or fill open positions, I would really like the board to also consider the Student and Neighborhood Relations Commission and try and get people on there that will reactivate the resources, because they're very, very much needed.
I know on your team. She was going to read Sylvia, so that's why she had her name down.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you, Florence. Next is Judith Dean. And Judith, we actually have already voted on this item, but you can go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Thank you, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you. My comments don't have to do with the pro or con of what you voted on, but I noticed that there was a notice of looking for volunteers on committees. And I, for a couple of years, my neighborhood has been looking for relief from problems with student housing and frat houses. And I know that you have a Student and Neighborhood Relations Commission, and I wanted to go to the meetings and ask them to address the issues that we've been having with serious, serious problems. I noticed that the members haven't been having any meetings. They haven't had any meetings in three years that are noted online. There's no meeting minutes since 2018. And if you're looking to replace people or fill open positions, I would really like the board to also consider the Student and Neighborhood Relations Commission and try and get people on there that will reactivate the resources because they're very, very much needed. You don't need to hear the details, I'm sure you understand. But we do have problems, and people in the neighborhood are taking things into their own hands, and it's not how it should be done.
Okay, so if you could make sure that you leave your information with our city clerk today, we will definitely have someone reach out to you. Just because they have not met does not mean that your problem will not be addressed. We do have an ordinance that we will still be, it is in effect. We will be making sure that we're enforcing that. So we have code compliance and other things, so if you could just leave your information, we'll have someone reach out to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to reports and AB 1234. We have not had a Sandag meeting. Since our last city council meeting, we have meetings on Friday. League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We met yesterday, and we received a presentation from retired Admiral Mark Ballmer. He's the president and CEO of the San Diego Military Advisory Council. Pretty informative as to the investments the military offers our particular region. Defense dollars represent one quarter of the gross economy of the San Diego region. There are $36 billion in direct funds and $56 billion in gross regional products that come to San Diego as a result of having the Navy and the Marine Corps and some components of the Army here. In the region, $19.3 billion were awarded in contracts to 1,700 companies at differing levels. Nav War remains in discussions to continue to how best utilize a property for military and residential purposes, and the goal is to have that redeveloped, and the developer that comes in to then aid or actually reconstruct that portion of that property down across from the Old Town Trolley Station to accommodate some military occupation. San Diego Mayor Gloria is helping with identifying a developer to manage the residential build. And sadly, California is the only state that doesn't offer some tax relief to military retire repay. The other 49 either offer a percentage or simply don't tax retire repay. This has led to many qualified retirees leaving the state and some defense contractors moving their functional operations out of California with just a shadow presence remaining in California. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. And North County Transit District, Deputy Mayor.
We meet next week.
Oh, next week? Okay. North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next meeting's in May.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on the 30th of March, our first in-person meeting, and it was in Oceanside at the city council chambers. We received a briefing on the Inflation Reduction Act and other grant opportunities. We'll continue to evaluate all of these to keep energy flowing and the rates down for our constituents. We voted to retain Trepey Smith as our marketing and public relations service provider and Keys &amp; Fox for legal services. And we entered into an agreement to have Keys &amp; Fox represent our association and San Diego Community Power jointly to the CPUC to ensure that they understand that there's a strong presence in San Diego about keeping our electricity rates down. And absent any last-minute issues, we are not scheduling an April meeting.
Okay. Moving on to city council business visits. Councilmember Musgrove and I attended the ribbon cutting for Gypsy's Lashes. It is woman-owned here in San Marcos by Shaloe, who was born and raised here in San Marcos. I met her mother and her aunt and a lot of San Marcos residents for many years. She spent many years traveling, living abroad, and this is where her lust for life and all the things traveling came to be. She graduated from UCSD and then came to pursue a career in opening up her own business right here in San Marcos with lash extensions and makeup. And she is one of the very few companies that actually, look how lovely it is, that actually does makeup and hair for weddings, which is kind of unusual. So if you have a wedding party, that's something that they do do. After graduating from Palomar Cosmetology here in San Marcos, she took its true form. And Shaloe has been doing lash extensions for over 13 years and has established a lash entrepreneurship course to help create careers. Did you want to add more to that, Councilmember?
No, she's a very, very dynamic person. I met her at a chamber coffee about three, four weeks ago, and very happy to go to her ribbon cutting, and her energy is just contagious. She's very focused on building up professionals, working with Palomar College, for those who are interested in that particular field to come over and, not necessarily in internship, but to ensure that they get the proper training and opportunities. And she has several employees, all the women in that picture right there, there are a couple that are friends, but the majority of them are employees. They work within the building in several disciplines, lash extensions, brow service, body waxing, facials, wedding and event hair and makeup, which is very interesting because we have a lot of different cottage industries in San Marcos that provide special services for events, whether it's a facility, accessory items, that it's just a matter of communication and getting them together. So one of the things we did was reach out to a particular company in San Marcos that provides those services. So if you're going to have a large event, a wedding, and you need those table settings and decorations and whatnot, Shaloe's business is one that touches a lot of people that have big events. And so they're always looking for other services to help with that. So kind of what we do with these business businesses is making that connection to keep our community working together and all of our businesses operating.
And her father and mother-in-law actually, or her father-in-law and mother-in-law actually own a business also in the city, a very long-time business, I think over 25 years. So that was great to see. And so now, she's opened her business, too, which we love to see that. Okay, council commentary. We have our new sheriff in town. Our captain, our new captain, has started. Could you come down and say hello to everyone? Captain Kevin Ralph, he was previously here in San Marcos, I think more than once, but if you could just come and tell us a little bit about yourself, and we just welcome you. We really support our law enforcement here in San Marcos, and we love the job that you're doing, one of the safest cities in the entire county. We appreciate it. You go right there to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm very excited to be here in the city of San Marcos again. I started my law enforcement career in the city back in 2006. Did about five years for the city and stood on that platform there and received multiple awards during that timeframe, from 2006 to 2011. And it's amazing now, as a captain, to come back and work for a phenomenal city council that truly supports the community and is here for you folks. And from the law enforcement perspective, I want to reach out to you as well and say thank you for being such a gracious community and an involved community. We truly appreciate the support.
Thank you very much. And we will definitely take you up on that. Hopefully, you start your coffees with the captain again. And then, one more thing, we just had Easter Sunday, and, oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot the creek. We just had Easter Sunday, and on Saturday, there was an egg hunt and breakfast out at Walnut Grove Park. Our city staff, I don't know how they managed it, but they are top-notch, and I just wanted to say thank you very much. Our Parks and Rec Department did a fabulous job, and there were literally thousands of people there. Everything went off without a hitch. It started out with the little kids, zero to two, I think it was, and then the bigger kids all got to have their egg hunt, too. A phenomenal job, really proud and grateful for our city staff, really appreciate all you guys do. And then I did forget one of our most important things to talk about. I passed our creek update. Our city manager was probably thinking, "Oh, yay, I don't have to talk tonight."
Or free pass.
My apologies. I know there's some big news because we actually poured a bulk of, finally, we've been waiting through the rain, a bulk of our bridge via Veracruz, which is a big deal. Do we have any idea how many trucks came to pour that? I think there were.
Hundreds.
Hundreds, hundreds. Okay, a lot of trucks. I actually asked city staff, when we're done with all of this, to give us the statistics on how much concrete was poured and how much rebar and all of that. So anyway, that'll be a fun fact that we'll know for the future. But Mr. Griffin, if you'd like to.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so the majority of the deck was, the bridge deck was poured last week on the 5th, and we'll schedule to do the remainder of the deck tomorrow. So that's really good news to get the bridge deck done, and then it'll sit for a month while concrete does what it does to get strong. Foundations for the sound wall along Discovery are under construction. Lots of utility service connections going in. The park improvements are going in along the trail. Pedestrian lighting is starting to go in. So you're starting to see sort of the finishing pieces of the project that you see when the project's getting close. Along Via Veracruz, the road's being brought up to grade. So a lot of good progress, and cross our fingers, we're through the rain, and we'll start to hopefully make up some time. But we are still looking at probably a July, some point, opening date.
July. Okay. And then I think we have the hospital opening up in August, if I'm not mistaken. The new Kaiser Permanente hospital.
That's our understanding, too, yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other council commentary? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Jack, can you give an update on the Twin Oaks and Discovery?
Sure.
Situation in the road?
So we were, we were out there for the last couple days, getting rid of the pavers that are in, you know, there were those individual pavers, and so that's the work. It was going right at the intersection of Barham and Twin Oaks and creating a bit of a mess, but it's a short-term project. The larger-term project of Discovery through to the creek area is actually a developer-built project. It's not a city-built project. Our hope is to open the portion from Twin Oaks to Rush to get to the second entrance at the shopping center here in the next month or so. But the through road, all the way through to the creek, won't be open, and we'll try to time that opening with our finish of the creek. So we'll hopefully get that traffic pattern back normal around Ralph Center and then the Through Street with our project.
Okay. And my understanding was there were some environmental issues with the extension of that road when they were doing the work, like some nesting.
There's a lot of utility issues at the intersection there.
Okay. Anyway, any other council commentary?
Real quick.
Quick?
Very quick.
Yes?
I'm going to call out Buck Martin, sitting back there, our director of Parks and Recreation, for a fantastic job of coordinating the Easter event, the spring egg roll. And Andrea Gonzalez was there with her son Garrett, dressed up like a giant bunny. Most of the kids loved it, some were a little more frightened than others, but it does kind of highlight the fact that everyone here thinks of the city as part of the family, so everyone chips in. We were there, serving food, cleaning up dishes. The mayor and I kind of worked shifts. My wife joined me this particular year. It was a lot of fun. It's just, it's really nice to see the community come out and enjoy that particular time, and the park is a great location for it.
You're not supposed to tell who was in the bunny suit.
I think it's going to be his last year. He's almost bunnied out.
Well, that's because he's actually going to be an adult next year, and so he doesn't have to do that anymore. And her daughter Aurora was there again this year, too. She said, "Guess who's in there?" I'm like, "You're not supposed to tell me."
We made sure the kids weren't looking when he took his hat off.
Yeah. One girl told me, "I'm definitely not going to because it's creepy. I'm not going up there and taking a picture with him."
It was a great time.
But then she likes clowns, so I don't really know what that's all about. So anyway, any other council commentary? All right. With that, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming.